Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Colleen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you ladies and gentlemen, we'll stand for a moment of silence to pledge allegiance to follow, just keep in mind everything that's going on in this world and hope we can get better direction where we're going. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion or legal action. This time I have one request to speak, Ruth Harrison.
Good evening Mayor and members of the council. Tonight you are going to discuss and possibly redirect or give different direction on the Main Street direction sign, and I'd like to restate what I said at a previous meeting, and that is that my suggestion would be to make it a one-sided sign because there is no left-hand turn going for the traffic going in the northerly direction, and it can cause some problems there, and we don't want to do that. So again, I suggest that the sign be one-sided for those people coming from the north, which is what you all said that road was going to be for, was mostly for those people coming from the north, from Anthem, from that direction, and that's why I think the one-sided sign would be most appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing no movement, I'll close call to the public.
Item six, public hearings and presentations. Item six A, public hearing on an application received from Kenwood Arnold Cranberg, Green Tree Inn and Suites located at 240 West Highway 287 Florence, Arizona for a new Series 11 hotel motel with restaurant liquor license and for council recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license. Mayor, members of council, you will recall that a few months ago we brought forth a type 12 series liquor license for this location. After working with the state, it was deemed that the type 11 liquor license was the best way for them to go to be able to retain their liquor license. This license was received on June 29th, it has been posted for 20 days in the location, and there's been no comments either in favor or against the liquor license.
Have you received anything from the public?
No sir.
Any member of the council have any questions at least at this time? Okay, at this time I'll open the public hearing. This public hearing is open on the liquor license at Green Tree Inn and Suites for a new Series 11 hotel motel with restaurant liquor license. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like to put in the public hearing? Don't all speak at once. Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing. Lisa, we need to take action on this tonight?
Yes sir, we need to forward either a recommendation of approval or disapproval to the Arizona State Department of Liquor License and Control.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to approve or recommend a favorable response from the council on the liquor license. The one question I have, does that also, and I've got to go back to it, I'm being so close to the school.
This is the one license that doesn't have the restriction on the feet from the school, so this one is not restricted.
According to the state or according to our code?
It's according to the state, and if you'll notice, it's also included on the application itself. It states that a type 11 series license is not included in the setbacks from the school or church.
Thank you. Is there any other question from the council? Do we have a motion to second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, recognition of Jeriah Jones, Jaden Kelly, and Jacob Stocky for their efforts over the summer while volunteering in various departments for the town of Florence. Mr. Brent Billingsley.
And me.
And Brian Hughes.
Mayor, council members, this summer we were fortunate to have three youth teens, young adults actually, who volunteered their time in the various departments with the town, and tonight we're here to recognize those efforts. Jeriah Jones volunteered over 100 hours primarily working in the community library and Parks and Recreation Department. He helped with everyday tasks from minor facility maintenance to helping set up rooms for programs that were happening. Pretty much became kind of our go-to person in the afternoons when our staff member was busy, we could always count on Jeriah to kind of pick up some of the slack. Jaden Kelly has volunteered over 300 hours in public works, water, wastewater, community development, and recently I guess information technology, so he's definitely keeping very busy as well. And Jacob Stocky is visiting from New Jersey, visiting his uncle up in the Anthem Sun City area, and called us up and said, is there anything that he might be able to help out with? And we said, come on down, we've had some luck with Jeriah, and they both got involved at the community center and at the library. So it's been a great summer for volunteerism here in Florence, and it's been very exciting, and all three of the teens actually by virtue of being around got involved with the teen program as well too, so they'll be involved in that presentation here later, but I'll turn it over to Brent now.
Few months ago, council member had an idea to start some teen leadership, and to have a program by which our teens could get involved in the civic organization, but could also perhaps get in the pipeline of being future government workers. We talked about and included provisions in the budget not only for a teen program, but the potential to have some internships for high school kids. However, that wasn't to be approved until July 1st, so after talking to Brian, the decision was made, if we had some kids who wanted to volunteer this year at no cost to the town, we would certainly try to provide them a learning experience while at the same time assisting the staff and saving us staff hours. And as you heard from Brian's presentation, these kids have given a lot of time to the town, and so we wanted to acknowledge them, allow them to be on TV, but also to give them a small recognition for the time that they've provided to the taxpayers of the town of Florence.
Young men, not kids, not boys, young men. We thank you for everything you've done for the town of Florence this summer. Remember us? Now who's going back to New Jersey? Remember, you're part of Florence now, so when you get back to New Jersey, you tell them you're an Arizonian, okay?
Yes sir.
Come up here. What did you say?
Yes sir.
Anybody recognize that accent, Peter? I didn't come from Coolidge or Florence or Eloy, I'll tell you that. But really, you guys, you're the starting, I'm hoping, for a lot of things to come with the teenagers here in Florence. You need to make Florence a better place to live, give them a better understanding of what government does, and you guys learned a lot. The stuff you learn, keep with you and expand on it, and you'll go far places. Now let me give you these certificates, they're not in gold or anything, but Jeriah, now Jeriah, come here, where are you from now?
I'm from Maryland, the east coast, and we moved down to Arizona, and I've been with helping and been involved with Florence ever since.
Great, well we're proud to have you as a citizen of Florence, and hopefully a voting member of the society when you get old enough. Now how old are you?
I'm 14.
14, okay, well thank you very much on behalf of the town and council myself. Jaden. Now, do I know you?
May.
Yeah, I may know you. Is that your little sister back there?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so. The, and your dad works for us?
Yes.
Okay, and you're now a Florence person too, right?
Yes.
You might not live here, but you're still Florence, okay? Don't forget that. Jaden, again I'll tell you, keep up the good work, we appreciate everything you've done for us this year, hope to see you back here next year. Did you get to go to swim pool any?
Yeah.
Okay. You can't all, you know, how old are you?
15.
15. Life has more to it than just completely working, you've got to enjoy yourself too, so take some time off, go back to school. They don't have, well if you go back, those teachers aren't slave drivers like some of our bosses, so okay. Jaden, on behalf of town council myself, thank you very much, and we look forward to being with you. Joyzy. Can you say Joyzy?
Jersey.
Huh?
Jersey.
Joyzy. And Jacob Stocky?
Yes sir.
I get that one right?
Yes sir.
Well, that's unusual. Jacob, when are you going home?
I'm going August 27th.
August 27th, that's pretty close. You still got some time to put in here. But enjoy the time when you're out here.
I always do.
And enjoy what you're doing, always ask questions, always try to learn, and always remember you've got a place here, anytime you want to come back to Florence, you don't have to volunteer, you can just come on back, okay? But if you volunteer, we'd really appreciate it. And when you get back to Joyzy, tell them Arizona desert rats out here kind of like you, okay?
Yes sir.
Okay Jacob. On behalf of town council.
Item C, presentation on the teen leadership program and recap of summer activities. Mr. Brian Hughes will present.
Mayor and council members, this is, provides a great deal of pride for me personally to stand up here. Like I said on the last item, a challenge was made to involve the youth in this community and to get them involved in not only a learning experience, but a productive experience where we can work with them to give back and show them the value of public service. As you know, at our last council meeting, council approved a contract with Mr. Kim Hunter, who's dressed very snazly in the three-piece suit back here, and we wanted to do it at the last meeting, but we didn't want to muddle things by having the teens presenting the same time you were approving contracts, so we wanted to bring the teens back, they've been participating for a couple months now, it's pretty impressive the things that they have achieved, and professionalism that is already being instilled in these young people that are very much part of this community. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian, but I'm very pleased, and you're going to hear from some of those young folks tonight.
Thank you Brent, mayor and council. As Brent stated, we approved the contract last, at our last meeting, but the work actually began months and months ago. It started with music and some games at a lunchtime program over at Florence High School. Coco Hunter came down and kind of gave us a taste of what we could expect as far as trying to get some of the kids enthusiasm up for programming, and it worked out, it was great. The problem was we did it I believe on May 12th, and school as you know was out in a couple of weeks, and there was a lot of stuff going on. So challenge really was to try and get some kids involved over the summertime, and it worked. It did involve some pizza and some other things to get the kids to come out to those first few meetings, but what grew from about four or five kids, you can see, we have a nice group in the back here now, so I only expect that to continue to grow. So tonight I'm going to have Coco and some of the teens just talk to you about what they've been doing for the last couple of months as they've gotten to know each other, tried to get some ideas of where they wanted this little group to go, and some of the things that they've got planned for the next couple of months. And the goal is that they come back in December and present to you guys again on what they've achieved over the last, or the upcoming months, and then again once before the school year's out. So I think this is an opportunity for all of us to just kind of see this group, which they've named themselves the Florence Teen Council, and they're working on logos and all kinds of other cool stuff, but it's a good opportunity for you to get to know some of them and kind of watch their growth over the next couple of months. So with that, I'll turn it over to Coco and the teens, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, how's everybody doing?
Great.
Good, 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 good to hear. First and foremost, I want to say thank you very much for waving your magic wand over the heads of these teens out here in Florence, and I'll tell you what, some magical things are going to happen, as a matter of fact, some magical things are already happening, and it's because of your vote. And just real quick, I'm always doing research, I'm always researching, and straight across the board, from town to town, from city to city, there's programs, some great programs for kids, there's great programs for adults, and even our precious senior citizens, but when it comes to teens, the programs and outlets, they're scarce. And I've spoken to some people, and they say the reason why that they don't program for teens is because it's hard for them to connect with the teens. And I kind of get that because teens nowadays, they're a different breed, and we have to admit that, but when you're programming for teens, it's very important to be very methodical, and sometimes you have to be covert with your tactics, and you just have to. And as of right now, our tactics and the system that we put in place, it's been working, and knock on wood, it's been working. And what you're going to see today is we have some members, like Brent and Brian said, we have some members of the Florence Teen Council, they call themselves the FTC, and they're going to give you some insight on how this program has impacted their summer. So no further delay, come into the microphone. Right now we have my man Jaden.
Good evening Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, employers of Florence. My name is Jaden Kelly, and I'm a 15-year-old volunteer and proud FTC member. I just want to start off by thanking Coco, Brian, oh I'm sorry, Brent, and, okay, Brian over there. I also want to thank my friend Jeriah Jones for introducing me into this council. The FTC, which stands for Florence Teen Council, is a safe haven for teens to express themselves and create and participate in Florence events. The FTC strives not only to better itself, but to also better the town of Florence. I have attended and helped in such events such as the teen pool parties, the field trips we've taken such as the D-backs game, and also on our teen meetings. These events help us teens show leadership to excel in the future, and also getting to know each other, and even setting a positive image on the town of Florence. I hope that the Mayor, Mr. Rankin, and the rest of the council board, and the associates of the teen program continue to fund this amazing experience for teens in the town of Florence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Florence council members, Vice Mayor, Mayor, I am Julianne, and I am part of the FTC. The FTC, our members are also hosting a special needs Halloween dance for the Tempe High Unified School District. We are going to have food, music, and even the members will go in there and kind of hang out with them. Last year they were, they had a mini circus, and this year we are rethinking that. We are expecting 250 through 300 people coming. It is going to be very epic. The FTC is also going to go out to the senior center where we're going to have, where we are going to have bingo, play bingo, and we will be playing their music and basically having fun. The FTC members just want to thank you for this amazing group. We enjoy it a lot, thank you, and this is my friend Robert.
Thank you.
Hello Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Robert, and I am the youngest in the group, it is really awesome to be in this group because since my catechism teacher isn't there no more, Tara. It's great because I get to be somewhere where there's no trouble, and I stay out of trouble now, and my grades are up really high because of this group, and it's amazing because we get to go on trips, and we're hosting stuff for the seniors and special needs, and it's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you Robert. Somebody trained him well, did you see him pull that mic down where he could talk? You're doing something over there.
First of all, my name is Aisha Thurman, and I just want to thank the Florence Council for allowing us to do this presentation. This group is about enriching our lives through activities, having fun, and we are inviting you to join with us, it's free. And what our FTC group is about is achieving goals, having good vibes, focusing on the positive, not the negative. We would like, yeah, the negative. Yeah. We would like you to be interested, so keep open-minded, focused with us, our director is Coco. You'll have, come have a blast with FTC group, thank you.
Thank you honey.
Hello Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Florence Council. Becoming a Florence Teen Council member is more than just meeting with your peers and planning events. There are great expectations to maintain our membership. A few of our expectations is giving our maximum effort and to cooperate fully with the Florence and school staff. Every FTC member is expected to have a 78% or more of a grade average, and to participate 95% scheduled meetings, 85% of our events, and being classed by the third bell. Those are the expectations, and I guarantee that we are going to maintain them.
Great, thank you honey.
Hello Florence Board, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Jeriah Jones, and I'm part of the FTC. Being, our goal as the FTC is to provide and sponsor events for teens all around Florence, and sometimes around Arizona, to have events and scheduled meetings and stuff for them to do around Arizona, so they're not home catching Z's or catching Pokemon. I'd like to, I'd like to personally thank all of you guys for supporting this and helping us do all that we have done so far. We have done multiple things, and one thing I'd like to put, that I'd like to talk about specifically, is the teen pool party that we had on Friday. Our teen pool party had 163 people, and even though it was only 30 minutes long because of the dust storm, it was pretty fun, and I heard a lot of good feedback from the kids that I have, that I surveyed off time on campus. Also being part of the FTC, I have learned lots of valuable life lessons, and I have used them in my everyday life, and I'm still going to. I have learned how to time manage, work with my peers, and I have learned to schedule and host events accordingly in a time on a schedule where when to plan the games, and when to put stuff out if you, you know. And this, these seven weeks that we have been together has been one of the most funnest summers that I've had, other than being, being able to work with Mr. Brian and Brett at the community center. Even though we may have disagreements at the beginning, we always come to an agreement at the end, and we always band together when times get tough. So I'd like to thank you guys for supporting us at this, in this event, in this group, because if it wasn't for you guys, I'd be at home doing nothing right now.
Thank you.
Members, that's your future right there, that's your future, and programming, events, expectations, those are the words that you heard, but I hope you heard something else. I hope you heard the life skills that these teens are now starting to develop and starting to understand, and Robert, he's only, he's in junior high school, and I don't know what his catechism teacher taught him, but he is all over it, and he gets it, and there's nothing better than seeing that light bulb go off in a teen's head, and listen, passion and expectations and the future and life skills, that's what this program is all about, that's the foundation of this program, and I can't thank you, I can't thank you. And Mr. Anderson, he came by to a meeting, that's why she wanted to invite all of you guys out here, he came to one of our meetings, sat down with us, joined in with us, and when he left, that's all they were talking about. They were so giddy, I mean, I didn't hear not one word about Justin Bieber, I heard nothing but John Anderson, it was a great relief, so she invited all you guys to come down, whenever you can, please, please make it down, and thank you once again.
Coco, let me ask you a couple questions.
Yes.
How many kids can your program hold, or host, and make it where it's not, doesn't get out of hand, and they get what they need?
That's a very good question, I'm greedy, I'm very greedy, I want to save them all, you know, you've heard the term, if you save one, it was all worth it, I'm sorry, that's not the way I roll, but you know, I guess it all depends, there's going to be some that are going to be part of the dance group, there's going to be some that's going to be part of the planning committee, so there's going to be probably four or five going on at the same time, you know, if I can see, if I can see 40 to 50 that we can do safely, and those 40 or 50 are reaching out to 1, 2, 3, 4, 500, I think we're doing some real good things.
And what are the grades in school that we're talking about tonight that are here?
Well, 78%, which is a high, high, high C. The other group I have, they have to sustain an 85% or better, and we'll get to that, I don't want to scare too many people off right now, so like I said, your tactics have to be covert sometimes.
No, I meant what grades are they in?
Oh, what grade level, okay, so eighth up to, I think sophomore is the highest we have right now, do we have a junior in here? No, a junior in high school. Not who you're named after, so.
Are you a junior? Robert, Robert. You cannot get the microphone again, Robert.
So yes, grade level, we have junior high up to, I think sophomore is the highest that we have right now, so they're brand new, brand new.
Two years, we ought to see one heck of an improvement in society and school around this area, shouldn't we?
If not sooner, I was just talking to Chief Hughes there, and the teen council, they want to do an event with the community where they're going to invite the officers out, do some barbecue, some water slides, and have a kickball competition against our officers here, and he's ready. He's, I saw the hair raise up on the back of his neck, he said, oh, we're going to beat you guys, so you know, two years from now, this community is going to be rocking, and it's going to be partly because of these teens here.
And you're going to be bringing other teens in to do your program, is that it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
From other communities?
Absolutely, we're reaching out to the Tempe Unified School District, we're doing a special needs Halloween party for them, they're planning a special needs prom where they provide prom dresses, the shoes, the music, everything, so they're going to give the special needs a prom just like the Gen Ed kids, and so they're reaching out to kids that they don't even know, how good is that?
And I know we gave you a contract, but are you set up where you can receive donors? donations from private industry or foundations?
Right. There's a few people that I've rubbed elbows with, that I've done some things with, I'm calling in some favors.
Okay. So everybody remember that, if you know any 301C companies that want to give to a worthwhile effort. Go ahead, Brent.
We, we are ready at the town if folks want to come forward with donations, and we've already asked a couple folks if they would be interested.
Okay, there we go. We, we can try to fund you any way we can.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Coco, thank you. And kids, thank you very much for showing up and being here and being polite, ladies and gentlemen. See if they do like the big grownups and leave after they're done.
Item D, Presentation on Durable Medical Equipment Loan Program. Mr. Brian Hughes.
Mayor, Council members, a few months ago, I was approached, actually, the town was approached by Seth Coleman, who's a resident from Anthem at Merrill Ranch, and asked if the town would participate in a durable medical equipment program. If you're not familiar with durable medical equipment, it's anything from crutches, walkers, scooters, things of that nature that can be used again over and over. And currently, we don't have, the town doesn't have any, anything like that going on. Up in Florence Gardens, they did have a similar program, but nothing through the municipality. So unless you were up at the Florence Gardens area, you didn't necessarily have access to some of that stuff. So Laura over at the senior center said this is something that they get quite a few requests for, and occasionally, people do donate some of those items to them. The biggest challenge in the past is just storage. They didn't have anywhere to, to keep it over at the senior center. Since we've moved out of the fitness center and over into the new offices over here, the old Parks and Recreation offices are now vacant, so they are available for storage of some of this material in addition to the stuff we already store over there. So it seemed like a win-win when Mr. Coleman approached us. All the equipment's going to be donated, it's minimal staff time, we have the space. It's just a, a good program that is available to Florence residents and visitors. I know my, my personal experience is my father had a knee replacement a couple months ago, and he went out and bought a really expensive walker that he used for two weeks. Now, if he would've had an opportunity to go somewhere and just borrow one for a few weeks, sign a form, and bring it back when he was done so somebody else could use it, that would've saved him quite a bit of money. So it's those types of situations, or if, you know, something unfortunate and unexpected, or you come in from out of town and you don't want to bring something with you, if you're just gonna care for a few weeks, this is an opportunity for folks just to stop by the fitness center, check something out, when they're done with it, bring it back. So again, it's a win-win for everyone, and I think we're, we're in a position, Florence Gardens already has their program up and running. We decided we wanted to kind of partner, so if we didn't have something in stock, send them up there and vice versa. So we're gonna hopefully get this started here in the next couple months. We've got everything in place, we just need to go get a few more things of equipment to fill up our storage room. But, but with that, I'd like to introduce Seth Coleman, who's actually here in the audience, just to, bless you. You good? Okay. He is here, he just wanted to support the program, but if it wasn't for him, we might not be in, in, in doing this program. So I want to thank him and all the folks who are gonna donate and who might benefit from this. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You can go right ahead. He, he doesn't get to talk all the time. Seth, if we, if we could get you to come up to the microphone, I'd appreciate that.
First, if I could say something about the volunteer program. When, when I found out that my nephew, my grandnephew was gonna be coming for the summer, I thought, what am I gonna do with him? Wanted a job, but we couldn't find anything, so we decided to ask Brian, and he said, oh, yeah. Every single day, when I pick him up, I say, Jacob, did you have a good time? Awesome! You want to hear what we did? And he starts going on and on about what he learned and what he did. And then, it was about a week or two ago, we went with the senior center that I was going, and I took him along up to Mount Lemon. And we got to the bus, he knew all the people because he had been there, you know, working there with the thing. So I think what you guys are doing, and Coco, it's just an excellent job, and Bryant, excellent job, so for that. The other thing is with adorable medical, how it came about was, we have so many people in Anthem, where I live, that, that go out and, like you said, buy something for two months that costs $450 or a scooter that's $800. They don't know what to do with it, and they can't, you know, they can't get rid of it, and they can't sell it on eBay or whatever. So why not see if we can use it for other people? So people kept asking there, and so I found an organization called Friends Indeed that was down in Green Valley, and they were one of the first in the United States that had done something like this. Everybody there is a volunteer. No one is paid. The executive director is not paid. And what they do is the, somebody is done with something they've used, they give it, and they have a humongous warehouse now. So they've offered it to the city of Florence, anything you need, all you have to do is come down and pick it up, and they'll get everything started. Now, when we first started doing it, I had no idea that Florence Gardens had already had a program, and they've been doing it for like 10 or 15 years, and people just walk in, they don't even sign anything. They just go ahead, take what they need, bring it back, and what a wonderful thing. It saves everybody money. So this is something that every single person in Florence can benefit from. Now, the other thing, when I gone to Leslie Bentley, who's our lifestyle director, when I talked to her, we want to get involved somehow with the, the city of Florence. We've got Anthem, and we've got the city of Florence, and it's, hi, how are you? Well, you know, let this be the first of many things that we can do. And the other thing that I'll tell you is sometimes it's hard to be impressed by people in, in the government, but I'm telling you, this gentleman you have for Parks and Recreation has done an excellent job. When I presented it to him, I had gotten so far with it, and then I thought, he said, oh, yes, he said, we have a place to put it, we can do this, and I said, okay. I said, here, let me go ahead and do this then, rather than have two of us, you take it. And he did, and he followed through. Go, Bryant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So thank all of you, and as I said, I hope this is the first of many things where we can integrate the different communities all together. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do too.
Item D, Presentation on Proposition 411, Town of Florence Expenditure Limitation Home Rule Option. Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's time to talk about Proposition 411. I don't know where the remote is, so let me see if this works. Here we go. What is Proposition 411? Proposition 411 is about local control. Much like the discussions that we had two months ago, and we, we as a staff provided presentations all over town, Proposition 411 is home rule. It's local control. It is voters deciding that their council can utilize the funds that their town brings in, our town brings in, in Florence. It's, it's the ability to determine how to use the funds that we bring in. A no vote, the town is subject to an expenditure limitation. What does that mean? There was a law passed, it was actually an amendment to the state constitution in 1979, 1980, that provided for the ability for state-imposed expenditure limitation with regard to the base amount based on expenditures in 1979, 1980. What does that mean? That means that either our council, our local electeds decide how to spend our revenues, or a no vote allows for us to expend up to the base amount from 1979, 1980. What does that mean? There was a similar election in 2014. The town did not pass the election in 2014. However, eight out of nine times, the voters in Florence have passed the home rule option. The town has retained local control and home rule for 33 out of 35 years. If passed, Proposition 411 will allow for local control for another four years. The election is going to be held on August 30th. A yes vote, as I said before, allows the town to determine its own expenditures based on our revenues for the next four years. A no vote, we have to utilize the expenditure limitation set by the state of Arizona for 1979, 1980 fiscal year, the base. Home rule does not, I repeat, does not impact taxes or fees. It does not raise them, it does not lower them. It is allowing us to maintain local control. What are the town services that are impacted, and what do we expend our funds on? Many of them are, are listed on the screen, and I'm sure for the folks at home, you'll be able to see that as well, our police, our fire, street maintenance, certainly Parks and Recreation, and programs like the one you just heard about from the teen council. What is the town doing to show our fiscal responsibility? Well, as everybody is aware, as the council has led us to this position, we balanced last year's budget, actually came out in the black, we balanced this year's budget, and how have we done that? Changed the way we've done business. We're using best practices in our operations, and certainly, we're being very fiscally conservative. And once again, thank you to all the department directors and the council for your leadership getting to that point. Every year, the town, by law, must go through a budget process. That is an open process. That is a process that welcomes public comment. That process is still going to happen if home rule is passed, and we have the ability to decide how we, as a town, expend the revenues that we bring in. If you have specific questions regarding home rule and local control, you can contact Lisa Garcia, who's here to my left. You can talk to Gabe Garcia, who's on the end. If need be, I'm, I'm always available, and so is Mr. Jessica Knutson. Are there any questions from the council?
I was just gonna mention that the voter information pamphlet came out today, and it has some good information about what home rule is, and, and even has some numbers and charts and things that are easy to understand.
Thank you.
Who put up the signs, Brent? Was that?
I looked at one of the signs, council member, mayor, council member. I looked at one of the signs when they first went up, and I believe they're put up by the firefighters organization.
I had several people ask me about it, because it doesn't say home rule on it.
Yes. It just says Proposition 411, yes.
Local control. It'd be nice if it had a banner that says home rule or something on it.
Yes, sir.
Brent, the other thing in your presentation, this is every four years.
Every four years.
According to law that we have to do it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna read the consent agenda today. Are you ready?
I guess.
All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda is called. Item 7A, proclamation declaring August 2016 as Child Support Awareness Month. Item B, proclamation declaring August 2016 as Drowning Impact Awareness Month. Item C, approval of the annual renewal of the GIS Enterprise License Agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute in amount not to exceed $27,175. Item D, approval of EUSI LLC Public Works Management Support Task Order Number 2. Item E, Resolution Number 1593-16, approval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, committing local funds as leverage for a fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant application. Item F, Resolution 1594-16, approval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, adopting a commercial anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan for fiscal year 2016, 2017, as required under Section 104D of the Housing Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. And item G, approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending June 30, 2016, in the amount
Any member of the council want anything taken off the consent agenda? Any member of the public like anything taken off the consent agenda? Seeing on movement, we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, we have a motion second to approve the consent agenda is read. Any other discussion? Very none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Well, I guess this next one's mine. Mark, can you get that up? The, after our last meeting, I had a businessman come up to me and said, we need to take a look at the wording restraint on the sign. The, the sign would be eliminating those restaurants down on Highway 79. And I, and I got to thinking about it, and is it the town's position to be promoting, which we promote all the time, but on a sign that we're paying for, for the different such as restaurants? The town hall, the libraries, museums, aquatic centers, the parks, and even the shops to a certain degree are fine. But if, if, Councilman Hawkins, I heard you talking a little while ago or earlier today, then maybe you'd call for a work session with different soap chamber and merchants to address this, maybe one of the ideas that you have, is I hear right?
Well, and I think, maybe if, if, I was just thinking, if we want, if we can get some different business people from around town, have a work session, possibly, or we can go ahead and, and discuss this tonight, but I was just, I, this was brought up to us this weekend, or whenever, anyway, about the, having a problem with restaurants being on there. And what we've been trying to do is, are we, are we open for discussion right now, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking, not, not without, I think the public can come in a little bit later, but just get it between the council right now, Bill.
Well, I, I feel that we've been asked over and over and over, you know, by the business community, saying, you know, you need to do more and more and more for Main Street. Well, I think this is a step in the right direction. Seems like every time I travel around the state, and I run into people, they'll say, you know, I'll ask them, where are you from? And they'll, you know, same with me. And when I tell them Florence, they'll say, well, that's where all the prisons are. And I said, yeah, we, we do probably have more prisons than any other town, but I said, there is more there than that. I said, what'd you think about our Main Street? And they said, well, all we saw were prisons on one side and a few businesses on the other. And I'm like, no, no, that wasn't Main Street, that's Highway 79. So that, you know, there's a lot of people that have been through here numerous times and don't even know what we have between Ruggles and Butte. And so I'm, I think this will really help give us some more exposure, and that's one reason we put the Main Street extension up there. And I, you know, we're not pointing out any particular business, but we do, I think, need to let people know what we have on Main Street. So I'm fine with the sign, but if, if there's that many people out there that, that don't like it, then, you know, if we feel as there's that much of a need for it, we could have a work session, we don't have to rush through this, but I don't think we've rushed through it anyway. We have discussed this several times. But in my opinion, I, I think we need to list what we have down on Main Street and be proud of it. The only thing I would say myself on the sign, maybe Florence a little smaller and make the historic Main Street bigger, or, you know, the historic part bigger, because they know they're in Florence already by the time they get to that point. Because up by Florence Gardens, we have that Adobe monument up there stating that they're coming into Florence already. That's just, that's my feeling on it.
You know, I took a look at it, and I looked at the sign restaurants in there, and I went and did a survey, and we have seven eating establishments on Main, out to 287, we have seven on Highway 79, all the way from the river bottom down to Big Quicks, here on Main Street from the Fudge Shop out to A&amp;M Pizza. So it's half and half.
Yeah.
Exactly. The, the one thing that, and I think we missed stuff or missed on Valerie's suggestion last time, is on the community center, or the visitor center, rather. Or the visitor center, rather. Because that sits in McFarland State Park. But if you go around to a lot of places, you're going to see highway signs directing people to the visitor center. And as far as I know, do we have any of those in town anymore? I don't think so.
Haven't seen any.
Chris, do you know off the hand?
No, sir.
I, I don't think so either. I don't think they're there. But this would be one way to get people, when we put that extension into Main Street to put it out to 79, that was to help the merchants on Main Street get more vehicular traffic down there. This is also going to assist in getting them down there. I myself would like to take, see restaurants taken off and the visitor center put on like Valerie suggested last time. I don't know about the rest of the council.
I don't have a problem. I'd like to see the shops taken off, restaurants and shops taken off, and just say what Valerie had said, Business District, or something like that. Because I don't think we want to get into any kind of situation like Gilbert did, where we're showing some kind of favoritism for one part of town versus the other part of town for businesses.
Well, I don't feel we're showing favoritism. I mean, now, for years, we've been trying to rejuvenate Main Street. Main Street has no exposure. People come into town from the south, they hit the street light, they turn, they hit the next light, they go out 79. You know, this-
My opinion is that this sign is meant to be a directional sign, to tell people, "If you turn this way, this is where you're going to find." It's not meant to be an advertisement for any-
No, it's letting them know what we've got in the historic district.
Directional sign. And like it has been said, people have been saying, "We don't advertise Main Street enough." That's the purpose of this sign, to tell people, "You go down Main Street, you're going to find these kind of things." And also with my suggestion last meeting to add visitor center, because most towns that you go to, you see a sign directing you to the visitor center. That's what you want people to do, so that if they go to the visitor center, then they can find out what's in town.
Well-
Well, I don't think, I don't think people should look at it as it's advertising a particular business, because I don't think that was the intent of the sign.
No, I don't, I don't feel that either. I, you know, 79 has the lion's share of traffic. I mean, you know, they've, they've got more traffic than Main Street will ever dream of having. So, you know, like I say, we've been trying to save Main Street. I think this is, we've got to, we've got to let people know that there, there is a Main Street, and what is, what's down there. You know, I think that, like I say, I think the historic Main Street should be in bigger letters, and, because they know they're in Florence already. But, you know, I, I, that's why I've been hearing over and over, "We need to do more for Main Street." Well, here we're trying to do it. And you've got one or two businesses that aren't agreeing with the sign. And that's, you know, like I say, I don't, I, I think it's fine. I, you know, if we could, like I said, we could jockey it, make the lettering raise the arrow a little bit, and put more room in there for visitor center, if we want to put that on there. But, anyway. Becky?
I don't have a problem with the historic businesses.
John, Becky was next.
No, I think the sign with the recommendation that Valerie made and what we agreed on last time is the correct, because this is a directional sign for the historic business district. And it's showing you what's available down there. And you're correct, Bill, 79 is fully exposed, and it has a majority of traffic. So people that are coming down here to visit on the weekends and in the cooler weather have no idea that this district is down here, and this is a perfect way to direct them to there. And it's no advertisement for any one business. It's just showing what is available.
I, Becky, and I agree with you. I, I think the Valerie suggestion last meeting about the visitor center is very valid, that needs to be on there. And if we take a look at the size of the sign we have at this time, the only place you're going to be able to take that off is restaurants and shops.
Well, no, you could move Aquatic Center over, put restaurants next to it, and then down on the bottom, you could put parks, shops, visitor center. You've got plenty of room.
John?
Well, if we're going to try to give people direction on, on what is down on Main Street, I think we should go back to the Chamber and have one of those signs put in, like the Chamber puts up out on Hunt, where they can list the names of the shops that are there. And people can advertise, you know, their shops where they want them. And we could lift people on 79, put up their names on shop, with arrows pointing one way, and downtown restaurants pointing the other way.
If, if we take a look at, in the past, that has been a Chamber's function, I would imagine nationwide is advertising their businesses?
Yes.
Well, that's, you're talking about, now you're talking about names of businesses. That's not what we're talking about here.
On this sign, and I know that we're off the agenda.
What?
No, agreeing with Bill on his point.
You're discussing, now you're discussing a different signage, whole different deal. You're, you're talking about advertising now. This isn't advertising. This is directing people to downtown, letting them know what's on Main Street. Not any particular business. What John brought up was advertising. That's, that's putting the names of the businesses. That's not what we're here for. We're here to discuss the, this sign.
You are advertising a category. You've got restaurants in there. What about service stations?
What?
About service stations, what about grocery stores?
Well, you know, I can't believe we're even talking about this myself. I mean, if we want to save Main Street, my God, we've got to let people know what we have. I can't even believe we're, we're even discussing this. I'm, I'm beyond-
Bill? Well, the thing is, the, I, I still think that the visitor center needs to be on that sign.
Sure.
And I agree with Valerie on that.
We can jockey it around and work it out.
Already decided that at the last meeting.
Already decided that last meeting.
And Mark's saying they could fit it on there.
Mark, had you, we can bring that on?
Yes, the signed company is going to fit the visitor center on there. We just haven't, we're using the old exhibit, because we told the signed company to hold off on producing new exhibits, because we knew this was coming on the agenda. But they, they will fit that on there.
Well, like I-
Or make any changes that you want.
Okay. Like I say, they already know they're in Florence. So if we have to make the Florence part a little smaller, so be it, to get the visitor center on there, and whatever else you might want.
Peter, did you want to say anything? Okay. Okay, is anybody, so, we're going to add the visitor center, we're going to leave the sign as is, with restaurants and shops on it? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Well, no, I think we ought to let the, ask if anybody in the public would like to come up and speak on this, because I do think-
Any member of the public like to speak? Come up, please.
My name is Jane Burcolli, and I am along with my business partner Jeff LaMonaco, are the owners of Main Street Vault. It's a restaurant next door to True Value Hardware, and it's located on historical downtown Main Street. I'm kind of wondering what the decision-making process is in regards to this issue of whether or not we can have the word "restaurants" on a signage board. We, of course, are supporting the word "restaurants," and I'm believing that Peter Kuloris, and forgive me if I'm pronouncing your name, is opposing it. The board isn't even a, and I'm already here trying to defend it. To have to attend this meeting because a fellow restaurateur is in opposition to his fellow restaurateurs getting some much-needed description downtown by having a display of the word "restaurant," it's vexing to me. This decision should not be made by merely capitulating to such an opposition. When Main Street was built, it was more, it was one more conduit for a person to get down to historical Main Street. By driving down the street, you can now get to some of the most essential town services and amenities, such as town hall, the library, the aquatic center, the visitor center, and the post office. But you can also now get to other businesses, such as ours, the Fudge Shop, and other shops as well. If the word "restaurants" is removed from the signage board, which for all intensive purposes is really an informational tool or a directional map, you would also have to remove the word "shops" from it. It would be unfair to reference all the myriad of shops down on historical Main Street if you do not also reference restaurants, which creates an undue bias. So many wonderful shops that are trying their best to survive, maintain and grow in a part of Florence that is in dire need of support. Shops that I do my best to promote every day to all of my customers, and they do vice versa for me. Town of Florence will be providing such an informational tool, one that has been long awaited, and I, along with Jeff, and I'm sure many other businesses, are extremely grateful for. I have a copy of a signage board, from which I snapped a photograph in a dust storm after having left the restaurant this past Friday. On the sign, which is the very first restaurant sign that one sees while driving down on 79A, is a, it's a sign that says "food." Underneath that is the name of Manathos, Florence Cafe, and Taco Bell. And for the life of me, and just out of curiosity, and comparatively speaking, I'm wondering how a sign that says "restaurants" for directional purposes is, is any more troublesome than a, than a sign that specifies the name of a restaurant as you first drive down on 79A? I wish I had that. I don't. So I guess what I want to say is, that without getting personal here, I just really find that my fellow restaurateur, Mr. Kuloris, having been on the Chamber of Commerce, and having been an executive, in an executive board position, why the spirit of the Chamber of Commerce is not promoted here, which the definition is, and I looked it up, it's very simple. It says it's a local association to promote and protect the interests of the business community in a particular area. And I just find it a little disconcerting that I have to be here and have to fight for something that is as merely a sign for which we are eternally grateful, but that only says "restaurants" when there is far more signage out there that specifies, specifies a lot more. So I thank the town council for allowing me to speak in behalf of Main Street Vault. Jeff and I renew our support for the forthcoming informational directional sign to include both restaurants and shops.
Thank you. Tara, do you have anything?
Well, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the issue in the audience? Mr. Kuloris, come up, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, with all due respect, I understand what Jane's saying, and I agree with her, actually. I think that we do need more direction for Main Street. Do I believe that restaurants and shops should be on a government sign? Personally, I do not. My own personal thing is no. Do I think that the Chamber should put up a sign over there and promote everybody equally? Yes. I think all the businesses in town need to be equally promoted the same way. I know we're trying to bring more business down to Main Street. I can understand that, I can respect that. We're trying to bring more traffic down to Main Street. I think that's a great thing that we're doing. But again, we have to keep in mind that this is still a government sign. It's a directional government sign, but it's still a government sign. And in my opinion, restaurants and shops are private entities that should not be on a government sign. That's how I feel about it. Should we have a sign right next to it from the Chamber of Commerce? Of course, 100%. Put them in alphabetical order, put, put all our business on there, and say, "Half a mile this way, half a mile that way, two miles that way." I think that would be amazing for all our businesses. I would even be willing to put a sign, an electric billboard sign up outside of my restaurant to promote the other restaurants. I love the other restaurants in town, and I would love to bring more traffic down Ruggles Road after it's fixed up again, down onto Historic Main Street. I am 100% in favor of that. But what I'm not in favor of is a sign when it comes to a government sign. With, I know it's not specific information, it's technically a directional sign, but restaurants and shops, everything up there, is all government entities. Town Hall, Library Museum, Aquatic Center, Parks, Visitor Center, those are all government entities. Restaurants and shops are not. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to, kind of, answer to that. We, we are putting a lot of tax money into improving Main Street. We receive, a lot of our money is from sales tax. If we, if we want to keep Main Street growing, and we want to keep building up our tax base and save the historic district, we need to help them all we can. And I don't see anything wrong with us having what we have on Main Street on this sign. I don't think that's a violation of government at all.
I personally-
I know, there's plenty of communities that have directional signs that, that put, well, some of them don't put restaurants, they'll put food, or gas, or whatever, instead of gas stations. But in order to do what you were suggesting with the, putting the different businesses and saying a half mile on up straight, a half mile over this way and that way, you'd end up with a billboard, probably, you know, 20 feet, 30 feet tall by 80 feet. If you're going to list directions to every single business, that would, and that's-
Town, and your town code law, they've been talking about.
And, you know, you have one of the tallest signs in the town. You've got, you've got, you've got two signs on the east side, one in the front, and they're the most, one of, some of the most noticeable. I mean-
And I had to go through council, I had to get those-
Right.
And I had to go down all the legal venues.
But I'm saying, you know, and, I don't, you're the only restaurant we've heard from. And we, we've still got new restaurants opening up, every now and then, on 79. None of them have said anything about it, and they know about it, because I went around and talked to them, and they said they had no problem with it.
That's why I said, it's a matter of opinion.
Well-
My opinion is, one thing, you guys are welcome to do whatever you're going to do as a council, and as a mayor and vice mayor. I'm going to accept that and respect that.
Okay.
The reason I brought it up is I wanted to get it out in the open, get it cleared up, and figure out what we're going to do on it. From what I'm hearing from the council, it looks like we want to stay with status quo on where we're at. With the exception of adding the sign, or the visitor center. Well-
Yep, that was decided at the last meeting. To add visitor center to what was already on there, so.
Well, yeah, we'd like to see the final product, you know, before we finally okay it.
Well, not only do we want to see the final product, but I do believe that a lot of different perspectives have been brought out. I would like to have an opportunity to bring everybody to the table, to have a discussion, invite the chamber to talk about the options for putting up certain signs, get everybody together to talk and communicate what is best for the town and the direction.
Well, I think that's a side issue. If they want to get together to put out advertising signs, I think the chamber should do that. This is a Town of Florence directional sign that we have already voted on and decided on how it was going to be. And on this agenda for tonight, there is not any-
No, no action.
No action item. So for discussion only, we've discussed, and I appreciate Peter's opinion. Everybody has a right to their opinion, and I appreciate that. But this item has already been voted on.
And my, my deal bringing it back is because it was brought to me by a merchant here in the town. And after looking at it, I, I too agree with him that that's a government sign, that we shouldn't have that on there. I'd like to see it off, but we, like you said, we voted on it last time. The only way we could bring it up again is if the council had, wanted to go with me on what I wanted, and we could ask for it to be re-agenda, put on the agenda again in the future. And that's-
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
And I agree as well.
I think we should take the commercial stuff off of it. It's a government sign.
So we can put it back-
And that wasn't, and that wasn't spontaneous thinking about it, because I went and I tried to think of other communities around with directional signs, and you don't see communities with commercial endeavors on their signs. I think we're a separation there of business and government. That was just my way of bringing it back, Bill. That's all I'm trying to do, and that's, so I, I see it, from what I'm hearing, that we can't take a vote, and we can't, I can't, what do you call that other word? I can't figure out who everybody's doing, I can't ask everybody what they think. But I think from the discussion, I think from what the discussion is, though, that I hear that to leave it alone and go forward. Yeah, that's my-
That's my opinion.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's my opinion. I mean, that's, but, yeah.
I want to bring it back.
I'd like, we can have that discussion after the meeting as well because if a yes vote happened, like if a yes vote already occurs, the person who voted yes can bring it back on a future agenda, especially since an expenditure hasn't already been made.
I think we all voted Jeff's for it.
Can I make clarification, please? The action item tonight is for discussion and possible redirection.
That's why I said after the meeting.
That is listed as an action item on this agenda. I, I don't recall that we actually voted on the verbiage. We voted on the concept of the sign, but I don't think we voted on the verbiage last meeting. I may be wrong, but I don't recall. We just had another discussion about what should be on the sign.
Well, one other thing I'd like to get a discussion on is an opinion from our legal counsel with all the stuff that's going on with the content of the sign and, and the lawsuit that Gilbert went through. Are we in a gray area here?
Well, without going back and going through the specifics of the Supreme Court case, there is a category for government signs that the court allowed governments to proceed with. You know, there may be some gray area when you get into, the more specific you get into on content, you might have a little more of an issue getting away from a government sign, but I mean, there's probably a pretty good legal argument, this is a directional sign describing what is in the historic business district. So on the issue of procedure, typically for a reconsideration, that would have to happen at the next meeting. So I don't know off the top of my head, quite frankly, without looking at the minutes, exactly what was voted on at the next, last meeting.
These are generic terms. They're not, I mean...
Brent?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I did, I do remember what was said at the last meeting. And we very specifically said this wording plus add visitor center, and that was part of what was voted on at the last meeting.
Yep.
So it was, as a matter of fact, we were told to move forward with the purchase. So Mark had already contacted them. So when the mayor came forward and said he wanted to put it back on the agenda, I had to immediately contact Mark and say, put, stop the order on the sign because we're bringing it back at the next meeting. We, we'd actually gone forward with ordering the sign.
Right. And so the sign has been ordered, it's just on hold at this time?
It's on hold. We told them not manufacture it because it could, it could have changes.
Okay. Well, from what I'm seeing is, it looks like it's, doesn't look like we need to redirect it from the comments I've heard tonight. And I think that, you know, that's, if that's what the majority of the conversation I've heard goes, then it's what we need to go with. Not like it, but that's the way government is. If any council person has anything after, on this, after the meeting, get with me before they go forward with it anymore on ordering. Okay, so that'll it. We're going to leave it and go to the, the work session on EUSIs. How long is that going to take?
I would guess fifteen to twenty minutes.
Okay, well, I need to take a break before we go into there. Okay, so we're going to take about a five-minute break. Call the meeting back to order. Brent?
Ready?
Go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as, as you know, six months ago, the town went out and hired a company named EUSI to do a number of tasks and awarded a one-year contract. They have completed the first phase of that contract. And that contract was to come in and take a look at some of the known problem areas that we had from a public works perspective, look at our operations, look at conditions of our facilities. At the time when they were brought on board, we were under a consent order from the state of Arizona. I'm happy to report that we are no longer, and I read that at the last meeting, under that consent order, which is a legal order against the town. And we've made massive improvements to our public infrastructure system. Tonight, council approved a reduction in their fee to, to the town for the next six months to move forward with further implementation of the things that they had found that they've recommended get changed. So I had asked Paul to come tonight. Paul Hendricks is in the back from EUSI, as well as I think he's going to be assisted by our public works director, Chris, in providing a presentation on what they found. And ultimately, there will be a report produced of our condition analysis. So with that, I will turn this over to Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. It's an honor to be here this evening. It's an honor for our company to work for you all. I just want to acknowledge Tim and Jason and Joy. They, they've been very instrumental within the public works department, working under Mr. Salas to implement many of the things that we'll talk about this evening. Click it or roll it?
Use this one and push that button.
Okay, is there a pointer in?
There is, right there is a...
Okay. So I just want to, again, acknowledge that you have loyal employees, a good building for public works, a modern fleet, and substantial progress has been made within the department in this last time period. And there's significant capacity in your south wastewater treatment facility. It's amazing, once we outlined some of these things, Tim's staff and Jason's staff got busy and we've identified many, many projects. And I'm pleased to say that they've completed over seventy-seven separate projects and with the support of town management. You still have many challenges. Better utilization of your physical assets and person, personnel, being more proactive in serving the needs of the citizens, and improving your long-range planning and fiscal It's interesting when you think about a utility system, a public works system, the streets that you drive on are just one aspect of, of it. The utilities that are underneath that you don't know until they start bubbling out of the ground. And much of your infrastructure is, is long overdue for an upgrade. Really looking at a comprehensive asset management system is going to be a key to being able to stabilize your rates and only make rate increases or, and make better utilization of the rates that you have through an asset management system. It'll tell you where to spend your money, where to buy your resources. We did an initial observation of your water and wastewater facilities. You'll see some pictures in a moment. The town staff took our personnel around and, like we said, they made significant improvements. What you're going to see here is some before pictures and some after pictures, just giving you some very high-level observations of equipment. Your well site, your booster pump station, your chlorine feed systems. You can see that much of this was developed and, and has been upgraded using the resources they had available to them rather than having a fully engineered system. There's a new well at your well site over by the river that needs to be equipped. We either need to take the existing one out of service or put in a booster station. This tank on the right-hand side, the tall tank there, you can see that the, the tank is a very tall tank, but we're only able to use half of that tank because of some structural concerns. So refurbishing tanks and making sure that things are safe has been ongoing. You have an old well site and going out to it that the town does not have a right-of-way or easements to. We have a new well that's been subject to some complaints. Mr. Salas has done some noise assessments and there's a project to reduce the motor noise at that site. And I, in fact, made a call to the resident today to give him progress report. This is one of your tanks over at Site Five. Tim and his staff are inside there doing an internal inspection. The fire services came along and made sure we get it safely. Those spots on the floor are actually excess oil and buildup of things inside the tank that you don't really want. We're going to be going out to bid for coating, recoating of those tanks. It's in your budget. You can see the booster pumps. The Tim's staff has removed one of those and we're getting quotes for replacing those. And the outside of the tanks at that site also, the coating has exceeded its useful life. Down at the wastewater facility, Jason's staff ordered some new augers and new internal components. They were bent and worn out and simply not able to perform like they should have. That allows the excessive debris that comes in the sewage to plug up pumps and create problems. You can see a screen over on the left-hand side that is, you know, totally plugged up because the headwork screens weren't working. Some of the equipment was put in, in the last construction project and you need some extra protection in some of that equipment in order for it to live its life. We know what the Arizona sun is like and you take that plastic and the chemical that's inside and bake it for a few weeks and it doesn't work as good as it used to. Under the new safety standards, you have to have containment of chemicals and certain petroleum products. Staff have, in the past, have had to, you know, take sandbags and visqueen and kind of make some kind of a barrier. And they're now putting in engineered pallets that are containment pallets. Basically, the whole safety and, and procedures have been upgraded substantially. There was an OSHA inspection and the town was able to pass that inspection. At the north plant, it's been kind of an orphaned facility. Some of you that have been around a while kind of know the history of it. It's a lot of makeshift equipment, old equipment. And so the, the inlet screen is, is subject to some real problems. Grit removal isn't effective. On the left-hand side is some of the electrical equipment that we observed initially. They've had electrical contractors come in and start enclosing those panels and make things safe for employees. You can see equipment that is subject to leaking and environmental potential with oil leaking on the ground. Handrails that are better than nothing, but are not in compliance with the safety regulations. Because of challenges with our environment, weeds are really a problem to keep up with and the staff have done a lot better job of addressing that. And then this is chlorine equipment on the right-hand side. This, this equipment needs to be secured and, and stored properly and, and it is now. Some of the equipment at that site on the left is a pressure sand tank, a sand filter tank. You can see staff have patched the old blue jeans there and made, made it work. And new tank has been ordered and should be here soon. The pump on the right is, is out for servicing right now. You can kind of see the weed condition on the left-hand side, the way it was and how it is now, how staff have gone in there and cleaned that out. So again, the improvements that have been made as subsequent to our initial assessment, the support of management and staff have accomplished these kinds of significant things. We appreciate the support of mayor and council and I'll turn it over to Mr. Salas now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to thank Paul and the entire EUSI team for making my transition as the public works director easier on myself and the staff so we maintained some continuity that was previously existing. I want to say that the talents of EUSI are greater than one person and obviously I'm speaking to Paul. The talents are specialized and are, and are geared towards helping communities choose and implement very specialized equipment and process. This type of knowledge is generally contained within the consulting community and not necessarily with one regiment, no matter how specialized they are. So they're, we're, we're bringing an entire team of, of individuals, not necessarily just Paul, who is, again, the face of that company for Florence. In the meantime, we are working at implementing many smaller changes within public works to allow us to make incremental changes within our staff. And at the end of that, we will then be looking at any future needs for staffing at that point. At that point, we'll hopefully transition away from EUSI and will be more able to manage projects that are a little bit more in, in size and in nature to our existing group. But right now, we have a very aggressive CIP and Paul is key in getting these projects delivered on time this year. Thank you.
Brent?
Mr. Mayor, in closing, I need to thank the people that really, really matter and they're twofold. Number one, all of the hard-working staff members from the Town of Florence that have been out there in the heat and in the cold and in the dirty yucky stuff that we saw on the slide presentation, doing a fine job to, to really become a Class A organization, hopefully an award-winning organization from the water and the sewer side. And, and I'd be remiss if I did not thank the town council because more than, more than a few times I've come before you in the last few months and said, we need some money to do this. Hopefully you recognize some of the projects that we've worked on. Influent pumps, post EQ, fine screen at the south wastewater treatment plant, electrical upgrades at the north plant. We appreciate your support in helping us make these improvements for the betterment of not only the Florence staff, but the Town of Florence as, as a whole. And as you know, and I'm going to talk about it in a little bit, there's a very aggressive CIP that we're going to work very hard to accomplish this year. And the lion's share of those CIP items are on water and sewer side and the lion, lion's share of the money. So we appreciate the support.
Brent, I guess one question. We, we just extended the task order, number two...
Yep.
For what, how long?
Six months.
Six months. How many more of these do you anticipate having?
Well, hopefully, we'll, we'll see. It depends on a lot of things. Hopefully, after six months, we're able to stand on our feet and we will have completed a, a number of those items. I would say that the budget reduced from a hundred and four thousand and change to seventy-six thousand, which is a sizable decrease in cost, but that's commensurate with a complete change in scope. EUSI's scope now forward is program management, continued advisement, compliance assistance, but also it's our hope to go after some funding for some larger projects, especially on the water system this year. So they'll be helping us with that as well as council has challenged staff with working on obtaining recharge credits and getting permitting for recharge. So for the next six months, EUSI is going to focus on those tasks. That said, if we're successful in acquiring, say, a multimillion dollar loan, low-interest loan from WIFA, and we accomplish or are able to move forward with millions of dollars worth of projects on the water side from WIFA, we're going to need assistance, continued to manage and oversee those projects. We simply don't have the staff to do that.
Okay, you said millions of dollars?
Yes.
Where are you planning on using them at?
Well, we have a whole list of projects, Mr. Mayor, many of which are, are on the CIP. As you heard Paul say, we have, in a lot of ways, an, an old system here in Florence on, on the water side, but also on the wastewater side at, at the north plant. And there are millions of dollars' worth of work that needs to be completed in various projects.
Now, how would that affect the town if we were to have to go in and put a wastewater system in for development on the west side of, of Curser or the... system in for development on the west side of Curser or the mine's property? On the ability to gain money from WIFA?
My understanding is WIFA will not give us loan money to build a new system for new development. That's not what they're about. WIFA is about assisting us and meeting compliance with our existing system. So if we were hoping to go to WIFA to build a new plant to support new development, there's a gift clause issue there, not only for us but for WIFA because essentially we'd be using public funds to help private development. The WIFA funds that we would focus on at this time are upgrades to our existing system where we have noted compliance issues.
So the project, if we did run a line from Florence Gardens, south, southwest, that would have to be done through bonds or development agreements with the developers?
It's a far-reaching discussion beyond our conversation tonight, but yeah, we should at some point start looking at various methods to fund a future plant. The hope now is that, I think initially when those discussions were taking place, the thought was we were going to shut down the North Plant in two or three years. Well, two or three years has now turned into 15 and just padding it along, it now requires some major work at this time. And the thought would be, and the hope would be, if we can improve that plant and gain capacity in that plant, for a piece of time, we could lift to that plant if we needed to phase in development. We also have the potential, as Paul said, we have excess capacity in our South Plant, so there could be an improvement in the future of a forced main from north to south to the other plant as well. Be a very expensive project, but we do have capacity in that plant, so we do have options.
And we have, at the South Plant, we have enough land for expansion if we need to make it?
Yes, indeed. As a matter of fact, our most recent WIFA loan that we've been working on, you know that we're closing out, that was, I believe, funded in 2009. One part of that loan was to do an expansion plan into the future and that document, I think, is about over 90% complete. I'm looking for Paul. Over 90% complete. So we'll be taking that document forward to Council in the next few meetings.
Under WIFA, can we buy a recharge, not a recharge, but we're producing A-fluent or AAA-fluent or what? What is our, at the South Plant?
We produce A-plus effluent. We are permitted for B.
Okay.
Or is it A or is it B? So we're permitted for A-plus? We produce A-plus, but we're not permitted for A-plus. I think we're permitted for B, B-plus. So we cannot, to answer your question, we cannot get recharge credits for recharging B-plus. We'll have to re-permit for A-plus as part of that process.
How close are we to there?
We're already producing A-plus effluent. We just haven't redone the permit because the, with, with an upgrade in permit becomes an upgrade in controls and documentation and testing.
Okay. How soon do you think it'll be where we can actually reuse that water, like the water our park?
Once again, thanks to Council. We have $100,000 in this year's CIPN budget to start the process to get the permitting and the engineering design necessary to go to A-plus and to be able to recharge. That's answer number one. Answer number two is with our B-plus effluent that we produce now, there are some reuse opportunities without re-permitting our waste.
Do you know, members of Council, have anything they'd like to talk about water or sewer?
I have a question because watching 60 Minutes this week.
Mm-hmm, me too.
We saw all that about, you know, the lead in the water and so forth. How does our water stand with all the contamination and rust that we've seen here tonight with all our equipment? Are we, are we producing pretty good water?
We produce very good water. Our permit actually includes heavy metals testing that we have to do annually and as far as I know, we're passing every test. We haven't had an issue with heavy metals, have we?
Good.
We, I invite, as the kid said earlier, I invite Council members to come out with me, come out with Chris. We'll show you that we're producing very high-quality effluent. And I know the folks at the golf course in Florence Gardens are applauding with the quality of the effluent that we're now producing compared to what we were producing.
And I'll take your word for that.
Yeah.
Any other question? Okay, thank you very much, Paul. Thank you, Chris, and the guys that make it happen and the ladies that make actually what the big guys think. You guys doing a heck of a good job. We really appreciate what you're doing. Okay, a short manager's report.
Okay, first item, last meeting, I gave a presentation on CIP and our tool. We wanted very much to be able to bring back a demonstration of our tool for tonight. We did a software upgrade last week and it hoped we were going to be in a better place. We are still unable to produce that tool, but you have my word that we will produce that tool and it will show very specific information with regard to projects. Second item, today I provided for the Council, and it can be found on the website as well, calendar events for the library. Next, as everyone came in this evening and as you leave, you'll notice that there's a really pretty black truck parked out front. I think it's a Chevrolet. That is our truck that we were awarded through the Stone Garden Grant. Once again, those are federal funds specific to enforcement with our police department and there is $44,000 invested in that truck, but that's top to bottom. That was the truck, that was the upgrades, that was the lighting, the sirens, the computer, the docking station, and we have a wonderful piece of equipment that becomes fully ours in three years.
Correct.
Three years depreciation and it becomes ours. I'd like to call the chief up. He had a special presentation he wanted to make.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. You know, this has been a very tumultuous time for law enforcement these last several months. Many agencies across our nation are trying to figure out how they fit into their community. Our community's been a little different. We've had, our department's been a community policing philosophy the last several years. And what I really wanted to do tonight was just share with you, everywhere I go, the department has received a lot of thank you cards. Thank you for keeping our community safe. Thank you Florence Police Department. I will let you know how much I appreciate and admire you. Please accept this little treat as a token of my thanks. Mary. Another one, thank you for the peace of mind and safety and security you bring to our community every day. How comforting it is just to know that you're there. I've gotten enough food over the last several weeks, it's been amazing. We've had donuts, pizzas, a lot of things, and it just is thank you from our community. And there's so many people that have come in, I really wanted to just come before you and thank all of you for the support you've given the police department to thank our community. You know, Craig Larson came in, Courtney Ramirez, Lori Smolli, Rosemary and Paulette, just to name a few, and there's many more that I don't have all the names, but have just stopped by and just said, "We, we support you, we appreciate what you do." And then, as I said, you know, we've had everything from treats to pizza, from people just coming in and dropping something off just to let us know how much they appreciate the Florence Police Department. So I wanted to share that with you tonight.
Thank you, Dan. We do have some great people in this community. They've supported law enforcement a long time. We're going to continue as long as you have a good department there, they'll keep supporting. Just hopefully they'll keep the blue light on.
Yep. Well, it's been very good. I thank you for your support. I thank, you know, Brent and my fellow staff members have been very supportive of the department.
Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Mayor, we received 50 cases of donated water to the Fire Department for the program I talked about at the last meeting. Bill Bruin is now certified as a fire inspector. Passed an 87% approval rate. Mike Shurm has now certified as a fire inspector. Jason Penrod now certified as a fire inspector, went through the training courses and took the test. Our battalion chief, Jake Sample, has been admitted to the National Society of Leaders, of Leadership and Success, and will be going to a one-week class. Chief, where is it at, in Maryland? In Maryland, on behalf of our Fire Department. And lastly, Larry Garcia is now ASE certified for maintenance and repair. So we continue to educate, we continue to certify and make sure that our folks are the highest qualified out there. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, Brent. Department heads are here. Does anybody have any questions or any department heads? Hearing none, we go to call to the public, the second call to the public, same rules apply as the first. Any member of the public have anything they'd like to say? Oh, yeah, and I do have one guy.
Mayor and Council, like I said last week, Councilmember Anderson came down and hung out with us and so we have a thank you card handmade. Now, Mr. Anderson, he likes to fish. He's a bass man, so right here on this thank you card, you hold him, it's about, what, about 30 pounder there? That's probably about your average, right? Close to, it has his face on there and everything. So it says, "Thank you for coming to our FTC meeting. You're going to get hooked." Okay? And it was signed by all the, all of our members, so this is for you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's a pretty big fish. And I want to hear the story behind that one. I bet you, I'm sure he'll make up something.
I'll have one for it, yeah.
Okay. Any other member of the public have anything they'd like to say? Hearing none, a close call to the public, call to Council. Bill?
Well, I'd just like to congratulate Lisa Garcia on her award at the State Clerks Convention. She's, once again, she's won another award. She just, we're so lucky to have her. She, I don't know if anybody knows, everybody knows the different awards she's won, but she has been awarded the best clerk in the state. I mean, that's overcoming Phoenix, Tucson, anywhere. I mean, that's, we're so lucky. We do have a great staff. I don't think people realize what a quality staff we have. For such a small community, we're really lucky.
Karen? Mayor?
I just will ditto what Bill said. I'm always bragging about our staff. We have a staff in the state of Arizona, and I think that was the first time that award was given. So not only is Lisa great, but she has, she's made a historic mark on the state of Arizona. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have two things. First, for benefit of Coco and his teams, I told them I would make a request for water. They need cases of bottled water. I know the Fire Department was lucky to get water, but the teams are meeting twice a week now and so if anyone in the community wants to bring water down to the Parks and Rec, to the community center, I talked to Brian, he said he would store it for them. So I'm making an appeal to the, to the public to get us some water. Safeway, I think, has it on sale right now. Second thing that I wanted to bring out, I ended CAP meeting this last week and it was interesting to go, but it was very depressing. We are facing a major water crisis. You know, we've all seen pictures of what Lake Mead looks like and we're currently, CAP is currently projecting that next year they're going to have to cut their allotment by 30%. The following year, it may go down as much as 40%. That allotment will affect, the 30% will affect the ag users, primarily the reservations and the farmers. And of course, they're not too happy about that. And so that people here understand how this works, Arizona is at the bottom of the priority list for the Colorado River. When we negotiated to build the CAP back many years ago in order to get California to agree to it, gave them first priority on the water. So we're hurting for water and we all need to keep that in the back of our minds is, what are we going to do in the future? As our town grows and our valley grows here, we're going to have a serious problem. So, you know, we're going to hear more about water and water use and how we manage our water. Just want to make people aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Becky?
Yes, just to thank Lisa. Thanks for making us shine all the time. We appreciate you.
Tara?
Yes, I do. Lisa, congratulations, I'll start with that. Coco, great presentation tonight. It was great to see some former students as well as former catechism students. You're doing a great job. I look forward to the program continuing. Staff were doing a great job representing and bringing all the issues forward. Council, we work well together. I also want to say some of the issues that we bring forward, particularly abandoned buildings on Main Street, people who haven't paid their taxes on businesses since 2013. Something positive has come out of it. I know I haven't had the opportunity to share, but one of our local property owners who had nine properties that I spoke about before recently paid all of their $18,000 in back taxes on July 19th. So we just need to keep fighting the good fight and getting people to step up and do what's right.
I happened to be able to attend Lisa's ceremony up in Fountain Hills. Gave a little talk about it. How many people were there, Lisa? 100, 125?
100 clerks is what they told me, over 200.
The admiration towards Lisa you should have seen from the other recipients of other awards by the officers of the association. It's just amazing that we have the best clerk in the state, period. She served as the state president two years in a row, which said, I don't think anybody else has ever done that. And she did, this was the first-time award that they'd given us, prestigious clerk award. And she made me promise that I wouldn't say anything to make her cry. And she's sitting down there right now thinking, "Here he goes." The, they have more acronyms in the Clerks Association than I have ever seen in one place. They've got letters for everything. And they've got committees for, and every one of those committees have got an acronym. But, you know, the best acronym that I could give Lisa, and I set it up there, MOM, for the way I see here raising their voice here in the town of Florence and the state here with us and bringing them along. And Lisa is a father. I appreciate what you're doing for your kids. One other thing I would like to say here before, I am the representative of MAG. I have been reappointed to the MAG Transportation Committee for another period of year or so. The Transportation Committee is very important to this region as we set in developing the corridor, as we set and talk about the connection to I-24. And then also, we have already been able to get that one street sweep revalued to 175,000. So Council, I congratulate you on allowing us to go ahead and go into MAG. I think we've done a good job there. Still haven't attended the first Southeast Valley Partnership. Since that comes up, I'll let you know. And with that, school started, watch the crosswalks, watch the crossing guards. 15 miles in the school zone, if you go 17, you're in trouble. We want another safe school year here for our kids in Florence. And as I talk of our kids in Florence, I include the whole town. So the people in Anthem need to remember that the school zone is 15 miles an hour and out there, I'm going to have John Anderson out there with a box of rocks. We don't have enough police officers there, he's starting rocking the cars. So that's your, that's your new job every morning.
Our police chief already knows. I've already been after him, right? Somebody stole my sign this last week. Yeah, we found it. We got to get it back out there.
The whole thing is, it's for the kids, just like as we have our teen program, the traffic watch that we need to do around the schools and also downtown when they're crossing the streets on Main and Butte. the streets on Main and Butte. Be careful with them. Those little boogers have all the faith and adulation in the world, but we need to, you know, they're being taught not to depend on us, but they still do. So please be careful with your driving habits. With that, I need a motion. Make a motion, adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion, second adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We adjourn, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending.